Well, live.
So Dennis, what was the end of that joke?
Elinda lived happy ever after.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's ordinary council meeting, which is the last ordinary council council meeting of this term. I now declare the meeting open at half past five. So I'm referring to the agenda. Today's agenda, I'll start with the caretaker statement. This agenda has been certified by the chief executive officer, who has determined that the recommendations contained within the agenda are not prohibitive decisions as defined in either section sixty-nine, two of the local government act twenty twenty or council's election period policy. Item number two is privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. Our acknowledgement, we Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledged the Yorta Yora peoples of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton, with their respect to their travelled elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Councillors, do we have any apologies today?
May we have?
Yes, councillor Edin.
Thanks, Madam May. We have an apology from councillor Jevan Eddy.
And do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, okay. We'll all go to the vote now. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Next is our governance principles. They are stated on page five of this agenda. Item six is about declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflict of interest today with respect to the agenda item? No declarations of conflict of interest, okay. Item number seven is confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. There's a recommendation on page six that the minutes of the fifteenth September two thousand twenty council meeting as circulated be confirmed. And do I have a mover of this motion today? Councillor, okay?
I'm happy to move that. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you. And a second. Councillor Edin.
Thank you, Madam May. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay. And we now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carrying and opposed. With that, we'll now move on to item number eight on page seven of this agenda. And it is about recognition of former councillor John Gray. There's a recommendation on page seven. Could someone please move a motion? Councillor Hazleman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be very pleased to move the recommendation that the council note the passing of John Gray and recognising his years of service to council and the Greater Shepparton community.
Thank you, councillor Hazleman. And do I have a second? Councillor Patterson?
I'd like to second that. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you. Councillor Hazleman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to thank councillors that provided the opportunity to do so, that we can acknowledge John and also may well seek some indulgence in respect of the time. I'm not too sure in these few minutes we're going to do justice to John, but we'll certainly try on my reflections. John Philip Cameron Gray, it was unusual, you know, someone's full name, but I did know John's because he would call and announce himself as JPCG here, Chris. Initially thought it's a pretty strange affectation, but somehow it suited John and around the council table, it was often how he was called or Gray or Gray Boy. I think the JPCG was a better option. You really can't do justice to John in a few words. I couldn't list all of the organisations he belonged to, nor talk about his personality or character, as each of you, you know those features. And my piece is more about a reflection on my experiences with John and a friendship that spanned over fifty years. I first met John through sport and sports administration. I was a young kid playing cricket and he was a senior. And later I got into the administration side with the Shepparton Cricket Association and John would come along, making impassioned pleas, seeking support for some project, which usually made no headway until some karma heads would suggest a brief recess to allow the executive consider their position. A compromise we worked out and presented to John, who begrudgingly would accept the deal. Indigeneation was impressive, given he usually worked the deal out on the phone the day before. The stitching up of a deal was a stock-in-trade for John, which I saw many times later in local government and no doubt at the Catchment Management Authority in Golden Valley Water, where he also served for many years and indeed the countless groups and organisations with John was involved. John was a firm believer that in some games were a waste of time, and if you wanted to get results, you needed to be prepared to compromise. A few years later, I was elected to the Shire of Shepparton. The first bloke on the phone offering congratulations was John, which he repeated a couple of years later when I became Shire President. John's generosity and warmth was exemplified years later when my parents passed, and first on the doorstep was John with his condolences and an offering. John was a wonderful councillor, first at the Shire of Rodney and later the city of Greater Shepparton. He was across all of the issues. He understood the players and he had an unparalleled network of contacts locally and in Spring Street and in Canberra. When I became mayor, John provided subtle advice, never pushy, and he opened countless doors. Although one flaw in John's councillor persona was finance. He hated profit and loss and bumbling seats and on days when finance was on the agenda, he knew he would easily be distracted. John's singular contribution over many years on finance was to ask every year when a bridge repairs were being discussed, could we get bridging finance? I swear, I heard that line countless times over the years. And while he disliked finance, John knew how the system worked and a careful reading of the budget papers would reveal several of John's projects, where he had brought community groups to meet with council staff and the seeds were sown. John always believed that a successful councillor must develop post-working relationships with their colleagues, with the CEO and senior staff. He often said, you will not achieve anything flying silently. Heard that quote many times over the years. John's approach was motivated by his respect for the institution of the council as a mechanism for making decisions and providing direction. Issue of governance and team building that John pushed vigorously was the council tour. And in John's day, we travelled half the country, looking at projects of interest and meeting councillors from a diverse range of councils. And they were both valuable in building relationships and generating useful information. It were the odd traps though, because on these trips when passing a cemetery, John would invariably ensnare the newbie councillor by stating, very strange bylaw for that cemetery. No one living with five kilometres can be buried there. John would go back to watching the passing landscape while the newbies mounted the debates over said bylaw, until finally realising the key word was living. John was always entertaining, often mischievous, but always focused on achieving a good outcome. My favourite John story is actually probably a story detriment to myself. It involved a major council project and a series of public meetings, which John quickly recognised had become a platform for the same municipal malcontents, his trademark descriptor, who asked the same questions at each meeting. At the next of these meetings, upon arrival, John had a plan and loudly informed the chair that the mayor, me, may get called back to an urgent meeting in Shepparton. I dutifully made my presentation and before the question and answer section started, as arranged, pushed the mobile on my pocket and John's phone rings very loudly. theatrically, he jumps to his feet proclaiming that we needed to get back to Shepparton. Everybody was there, was very accepting of it, understanding, wished us all the best. And so out the door like a shot fox and off to Lambeth Pub for a couple of pots, laughing all the way. We would have been the ones shocked if our plot had been uncovered. When I visited him recently in hospital, it was one of the favourite stories he reminded me of. There were literally thousands of funny John stories in council, but I remember the very serious side as well. He was passionate about the development of our sports facilities and devoted hours to Deacon Reserve over the journey, from initially making the wickets at one stage to being on the committee of management later on. He was instrumental in the redevelopment of the Marutna Recreation Reserve, successfully getting the thoroughbred racetrack removed. And people may well remember the racetrack that went around the outside of the Recreation Reserve at Marutna. He was managed to get that removed and allowed the reserve to grow into the facility it is today. John's contribution was recognised in the naming of John Gray Oval. Many of the facilities in our small towns are the direct result of being championed by John. He argued strongly for green development with parks and trees in each development that came before council. Much of our street trees and landscape is the direct result of John's efforts. But even before his council involvement, John would propagate native species from seed and planted them all over Marutna in road reserves. He was before his time in respect of indigenous recognition, successfully moving a motion in two thousand and four that all council activity would be prefaced with a formal acknowledgement. A couple of years earlier, he'd raised the issue of flying the Aboriginal flag. Then you've got a mixed response around the table. That's fine, he said, I'll put a notice of motion at the next meeting and we can have this discussion in public and you can express your various views. Having called the bluff, the flags went up the next day. John absolutely detested the occasions when councillors would follow a populist line and knock back a contentious planning issue. Secure a knowledge would get approved at VCAP, who could then be blamed for the outcome. International Village and Apollo Drive brothel fit this category. The path of least resistance was to align with an loud and noisy protest group, but not John. He argued strongly for both decisions, which were later proven correct, but the targeted backlash was key in John losing his place on council. That particularly didn't bother him, because he didn't hold him back either, because he resumed his news column, which became a real weapon for change. If John raised an issue, an army of bureaucrats would scurry to address it. A mere mention could generate letters to the editor and John revelled in the excitement. He hated the right-wing extreme of politics, publicly battling with the League of Rights, Australia First and One Nation over the journey, and often used the column to expose the hypocrisy of what he called nut jobs. With the column, he was in his element, had a huge advantage over his targets. He was eloquent and articulate, and they were neither. His other art form was public question time at council meetings. He was vehemently opposed to the concept and submitted questions to expose, in his view, how stupid it was. On occasion, it was suggested to me that I approached John to ask him to withdraw his letter, because it was potentially embarrassing. That's why he was doing it, would be my response. What part of this don't you understand? You introduce questions and complain because John is exploiting a flawed process. On many occasions, after his column or public questions, we'd meet up, laugh our heads off at his efforts and the discomfort he had created. John leaves a huge void. Countless organisations, community groups sought John's backing and support for endless projects. Projects have stood a far better chance of success with John's support than without it. No reflect on fifty years and a long enduring friendship, but in those states had rank or disagreement. John was an important mentor, respected colleague and a person that I desired to emulate. I think back over that time that I suspect that John and I probably had an extended phone call or a coffee at least once every week for the last thirty to thirty-five years. I enjoyed his company, participated in his schemes and was a willing partner in his mischief. But other everything else, John was a very close friend. I loved him dearly, unreservedly and without question. Being asked to speak at his funeral was an honour and a privilege. His influence my life and indeed many others in a positive way that I suspect John never realised, his natural goodness always shone through. We are immeasurably the better for his being and the poorer for his passing.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazleman. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks. Thank you. Madam Mayor and thanks, Chris, that was wonderful. I first met John in, I think it was nineteen seventy-seven, where he was my English teacher at North Tech. And I still think that is probably his only failing in his whole life, my English teacher. He did his best, but he didn't have much to work with, I think. It was then quite a gap in our relationship until I'd become a councillor and we started catching up with John and myself would catch up for a coffee regularly, as he did with lots of councillors. And he's done that for a long time. He's always been there to help new councillors, old councillors and just have an input where he can and help people along the way on this journey that with a council and it can be hard work at times. But he was always, he never lost interest in council and he always had that sense of humour and every time would go to a different cafe and he'd always introduced me as his father to the waitress. He just ran that past every time and he always got a funny look from the waitress. And I think Shepparton will certainly be poorer for his passing. He had an amazing ability to help people and I know probably every council here is caught up in from time to time and had a chat and a coffee. He was always willing to help, he was always willing to offer advice and his knowledge was just amazing. And I was probably lucky because I was a Marutna-based person and John had been a Rodney Shire councillor. So he had that much experience and knowledge of the things he could tell me about Marutna was just incredible. And I still think he has taken some of the land that council owns to heaven with him and councils still don't know they own it. It was amazing what he knew that no one else knew. Names of trees that were dedicated to soldiers that died in the war, there was no record of a tree's ever been named, but he could name that tree was planned for such and such and he died the Second World War, the First World War. It was really, really impressive and the knowledge he had. Marutna is half named after John now with the Oval and Rec Reserve and his John Gray Avenue. And it's deserving and regulations have changed and you had to be passed before you have something named after these days. But John being John, he got in before that, let him name while he's alive though. You know, we're much the sad after his loss. As Chris said though, we're much a better place because John was here. The advice and friendship that he offered us as councillors was second to none. I caught up with him approximately about seven or eight days before he died in hospital. And then he was just, all he was interested in was council. What's happening? Who's standing? Who's going to get in? You know, he had a immense interest in council. And as Chris so eloquently described, he was not so big about the fussy points of council, he wanted things done. And yeah, we are a lot worse off a community for him passing, but we're a lot better community for him being here. And I too learned to love Johnny, he was a terrific guy. And yeah, we're all sad for him passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hazleman and councillor Patterson for your lovely tribute to John Gray. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you.
You'd be quickly struck down from heaven if you voted against that one.
Would have been a risk, I reckon.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, community directory. There are no reports today. Number ten, sustainable development directory, nil received. We move on to item eleven point one on page eleven. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Christmas arrangements. There's a recommendation on page eleven. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor, okay?
Thank you, Madam May. I'm happy to move the recommendation that the council resolved to close council offices at three P M on Thursday, the twenty-fourth of December twenty twenty and reopen at eight fifteen A M Monday, the fourth of January twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. And do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very briefly, it's Christmas time at that time and a very quiet period for council, so it doesn't really make that much difference to the organisation with our staff having a break at that time. Additional types of service is still run, however, the admin side of it will be closed. And as we said, it's a very quiet time of year. So yep, staff need to have a holiday and it's a perfect time to do so.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam May.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Next is item eleven point two, rescheduling of the November twenty twenty council meeting. There's a recommendation on page thirty. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Edin?
Yes, thank you, Madam May. I'll read the recommendation as the motion out. Thanks. That the council rescheduled the seventeenth of November twenty twenty council meeting on to Monday, the twenty-third of November twenty twenty at three P M. Point two, note that the meeting will be held at East Bank Centre, Seventy Waltham Street, Shepparton. Point three, inform members of the public that the public gallery will remain closed due to COVID nineteen restrictions. However, a live stream and recording of the meeting will be made publicly available.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councillor Svari?
Thanks, Madam May. I'll second the recommendation as a motion.
Thank you. Councillor Edin, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, Madam May. Obviously with COVID nineteen and the new processes in respect to the election, the results won't be known as early as in previous years. So that's led to us having to push this meeting out till the twenty-third. It's pretty self-explanatory, really.
Thank you. And councillor Svari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam May.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Next is item number eleven point three, September twenty twenty monthly financial report. There's a recommendation on page fifteen. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'll move that recommendation as a motion that the council receive in September twenty twenty monthly financial report.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Keith?
I'm happy to second that. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, thank you, Madam May. I'd just like to point out that there's been seventy-six percent of rate payers who have already paid the first instalment and sixteen percent have paid in full. There is four hundred and eighty-four people on a payment plan and it all shows us we've got eighteen million in investments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam May.
Thank you. And would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion?
Could I just make a comment, please? Madam May, in further to what councillor Sutton said, the eighteen million dollars in investments, that is, most of that is in pigeonholes for money that's been earned at the soi yards, for instance, that stays in the soi yards account until it's needed and lots of those scenarios occur. So we have that eighteen million sitting there, ready to go on something we think we should spend it on or the next council should spend it on. Just like to clear that up. Thank you. It's all in particular accounts that will be spent on particular projects.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Next is item eleven point four, audit and risk management committee meeting minutes. There's a recommendation on page seventeen of the agenda. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Keith?
I think, Madam May, I'm happy to move the recommendation that the council receive and note the minutes for the audit, risk and management committee meetings from eleven September twenty nineteen, thirty to November twenty nineteen, fifth of Feb twenty twenty and the sixth of May twenty twenty.
Thank you, councillor Keith. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Edin?
Thank you, Madam May. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Keith. Would you please speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam May. So the audit and risk management committee, they hold four meetings, as mentioned, between September and May, September nineteen, May twenty twenty. And basically, this is just the recording on that. There's quite a bit of detail there in the document. It's really a point to note that they do provide guidance to council to external internal auditing. So a very strong committee for council and something that we depend on obviously greatly to get great guidance and feedback. I'd also like to thank them for this report. It takes a lot of effort and if you look at over thirty, thirty-two points that are actually in the agenda, there's a lot of discussion that's been had to get to this point. So well done to the committee. They're doing a great job and it's, as I said, a very, very important committee for council.
Thank you, councillor Keith. Councillor Edin, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, Madam May. Councillor Keith covered it very well. But just to note, this committee is extremely important. It's the difference, they're in that gap between us and the Victoria Auditor General's office. So they're vital to the smooth operating of council and they're a good pressure relief valve in case something is spotted early. So they're very important and this motion just notes the four meetings they've had.
Thank you, councillor Edin. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Yes, councillor Hazleman?
Thank you, Madam May. It's been my privilege to be on this committee over many number of years, either in capacity as mayor or as the other councillor appointee. And I think it's certainly grown significantly from when it was implemented. And it is, as other councillors have said, it's an important function of the council. It employs independent members and it's an opportunity for independent members, the senior council staff and councillors to work together on a range of issues. And I would be certainly encouraging those councillors who seek to be returned, if there's an opportunity arises to get a gig on this particular committee, put your hand up for it. It is a really worthwhile committee to be part of.
Thank you, councillor Hazleman. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? All right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Next is item eleven point five. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual report. And this recommendation on page twenty, would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Edin?
Thank you, Madam May. I'd like to move the motion on page twenty. That the council endorsed the Greater Shepparton City Council Annual Report twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the year ended thirty to June twenty twenty, including the financial statements and performance statements as certified by the auditor general. Note that the attachment is declared confidential until the twenty-fourth of October twenty twenty to ensure compliance with council's election period policy.
Thank you, councillor Edin. Do I have a second? Councillor Sutton?
Madam May, I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Edin?
Yes, thanks, Madam May. Yeah, just quickly, the annual report is a requirement under the local government act. We do it each year. I don't think we can talk too much about it at this point. The detail will remain confidential until after the election is being completed. Due to the fact that some of the content within the report may provide some advantage for an existing incumbent councillor. But the report is important. It pretty much lays out what we've done over the last twelve months, what our aims and objectives were, whether we achieved them and where we are within that context.
Thank you, councillor Edin. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam May. Just as you said, it's a mandatory requirement from the local state government and this report is for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen financial year. And it details council's performances and its commitments in regard to the council plan. The annual report has also been approved by the audit and risk management committee who oversee this as well. Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, this is annual financial statements for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, councillor Sutton. Does anyone want to speak? No? Anyone wants to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. Next is item number twelve, uh, infra, from Infrastructure Directory twelve point one, which is about Variations Two and Three Contract, one nine eight one Design and Installation of Solar Photovoltaic Systems for Shepparton Savvyards and Aqua Moves. There's a recommendation on page twenty three and councillor Adam, you want to move this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think you've read out pretty much the motion, but I'll read it out again. Uh, recommendation on page twenty three, that the council approved payment of Variation Two under Contract nineteen eighty one, supply and construction of solar photovoltaic systems for the Shepparton Savvyards and Aqua Moves with a value of sixty one thousand four five three point two six, including J S T and point two approved panel of Variation Three under Contract nineteen eighty one, supply and construction of so, solar photovoltaic systems for the Shepparton Savvyards and Aqua Moves with a value of thirty five thousand one one zero point three five, including J S T.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Summer. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a procedural motion really. Um, when, when a, a solar installation is installed, uh, S T Cs are available as a subsidy from the state government. Uh, S T C stands for uh, Small Scale Technological Certificates. Um, for normally the operation is that the council will work out a deal with installer. Uh, the installer claims the S T Cs and we pay the difference. In this case, Solar Victoria, I think because we're a government body, wouldn't allow that to happen. We had to actually get the uh, S T Cs paid to us. And of course, we then give that installer because we've paid the uh, installation price less this amount. So it's really just a, a motion to uh, facilitate the moving of those funds from us back to the installer, which would have been the norm if we weren't a government uh, body, so to speak. So it's all above board and all correct. It's just a uh, a motion to allow that facilitation to happen.
Okay, thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Summer, do you want to speak to the motion?
Uh, I was going to just say what Dini said. Um, there's no, there's zero cost to council with this variance. We're basically just the middleman passing on the um, money. So it's a good project and I support it.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour. Motion carried, opposed. Okay, so next is item number thirty, Confidential Management Reports. Uh, thirteen point one, Designation of Confidentiality of Information Report Attachments. There's a recommendation on page twenty seven. Um, would someone please move a motion? Can't see any hands. Councillor Adam, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, recommendation on page twenty seven. Knowing the fact that this meeting is probably shorter than most meetings we've had over the past twelve months, I will read this out. Draw it out in another minute or so. In accordance with section seventy seven two B of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty nine, the council designates as confidential a following attachment previously designated by the C E O in writing as confidential under section seventy seven two C of the Act Two. Item one one point five, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Annual Report. This document contains information which may be considered to contain election material, which is irrelevant ground applying under section eighty nine two eight of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty nine.
Thank you. Do I have a second then? Councillor Sutton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, just briefly again. Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is pretty much what I referred to in the previous motion. I think or two motions before. Um, the uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Annual Report, the contents will remain confidential at this point, as I explained, because some of the content may uh, provide advantage to existing councillors. So this motion just keeps that in that confidential state.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer.
I just think it's a bit of a stretch to, to imply that we get some kind of advantage as a candidate from our annual report. Unfortunately, it's not as wide read, widely read as we'd like. And uh, it's not, it's not talking about things we're doing now. It's talking about things we've already done. So I think that has merit and our names aren't attached to it. So I think it's a little bit um, overkill to make it confidential until after the election. But um, the interest of, interest of expediency, I'm not going to harp on it too much.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, uh, councillor Adam, do you want to uh, to have your right of reply?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, I think the point that councillor uh, Summer raises is valid. I don't think it would make too much difference. However, it does fall under the Act. That's what we have to do. And I think the only photograph that appears from incumbent councillors is the mayor's in that report numerous times. Uh, not that I have any objection with the mayor's photograph being, appearing in that at all. But unfortunately, we have to abide by the rules, the regulations of the Act. So there it is.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Uh, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour. Motion carried. All right, next is item number fourteen, Documents for Signing and Sealing, nil. Uh, moving on to item fifteen, Councillor Reports, Councillor Activities. Item fifteen point one is uh, councillor activities for September twenty twenty. And there's a recommendation on page twenty eight. Would someone please move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation that the summary of the councillor's community interaction and briefing programme be received and record of assemblies of councillors be noted.
Thank you. And do I have a second then? Councillor Patterson.
I'd like to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, do you want to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The list has actually grown a little bit compared to last month's meeting, which is great. And I think it's a sign of the new norm. We're getting used to all these Zoom meetings and um, it's great to see the community are also reaching out a bit more and including councillors. Um, but one thing to note, I think, is the sod turning of the Museum of Vehicle Evolution. That was a great, something that has happened this past month and we're all very excited to see that evolve, obviously. But lots of great things happening, lots of committee meetings, meetings still happening. Um, obviously we're in caretaker mode now, but prior to that, um, it was still a very busy month. So it's really great to see things still moving forward. And I think we'll see things continue to do so, even with the next council law and council law groups when that happens. I think the new norm will be growing in a different way that we actually do things and that's listed here in that document.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd uh, endorse councillor O'Keefe's comments. It is bigger than the last month. Um, but unfortunately, it's considerably smaller than the last, you know, eight years worth. And I think every councillor, when you become a councillor, you're not doing it for the money, believe me. You're doing it for a lot of interaction with a lot of the communities and terrific people out in that community. And the best part about being a councillor, and um, as I said, I can say this from my standing, is you meet so many of those people and you meet organisations and groups. And uh, that's what I always got out of a councillor, being a councillor. And that hasn't been allowed to happen because of the obvious reasons, just no one told apart from the virus. The last best part of twelve months. And I think, I know we've all felt it. We've all missed that interaction with our community sort of thing. But you know, we'll beat this. We're nearly there and um, it'll go on. And I'm looking forward to looking at agendas when I'm touring around out back Queensland, looking at the agenda in twenty three pages and don't do any, they're busy, aren't they? So they should be, I don't know who would say. Um, yeah, it'll, we'll get over it and um, we'll be back to where it used to be. And um, that's the best part to being a councillor, meeting all these wonderful people who are in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. All right, um, would anyone like to speak against the motion? No? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazelman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, um, there's a number of um, things in here that probably should be highlighted. But the one that I'd like to mention is the um, the seventy sixth National Conference and Annual General Meeting of the Murray Darling Association that was successfully brought to Shepparton. And it's somewhat disappointing to see it's got a one page um, entry here as councillor activities. And at some point, some of the wide reaching decisions that were made, they are going to come back to this council and they're um, important, influential. I acknowledge the role of councillor Patterson in this uh, particular, both this conference and the outcome of that conference. And a future council will deal with the very productive outcomes.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour. Motion carried, opposed. Okay, so next is item fifteen point two, Council Committee Reports, nil received. Item fifteen point three, Notice of Motion Amendment or Recision, nil received. Item sixteen, Urgent Business, Not Included on the Agenda, None. Uh, however, before we uh, close our last ordinary council meeting of this term, I would like to make some acknowledgements and would take this opportunity to express our gratitude to those with whom we have shared this journey in the last four years. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the services of four retiring councillors. Uh, to start with, I'll briefly state their names and length of service. Councillor Chris Hazelman. Councillor Chris Hazelman's distinguished services to Greater Shepparton City Council has spanned a period of twenty one years and five months, from nineteen ninety seven to two thousand and twenty. During this period, councillor Hazelman also served as mayor of Greater Shepparton for five consecutive years, from nineteen ninety eight to two thousand and two. And before the local government amalgamations in Victoria, councillor Hazelman had also served as a shire of Shepparton councillor for nine years, from nineteen eighty five to nineteen ninety four. And during this period, councillor Hazelman was the shire president in nineteen ninety one and nineteen ninety two. Councillor Dennis Patterson. Councillor Patterson has served as councillor at Greater Shepparton City Council for eight years over a period of two consecutive council terms, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty. During this period, councillor Patterson also served as mayor of Greater Shepparton during two thousand fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Councillor Les Osvari has served as a councillor at Greater Shepparton City Council for two consecutive council terms over a period of eight years, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty. And councillor Bruce Jovanati, who is in apology today, he has served as councillor at Greater Shepparton City Council for four years in this current term, starting in two thousand and sixteen. So on behalf of everyone here, I would like to express our profuse thanks to all the retiring councillors for their dedication, commitment and contributions to Greater Shepparton and the wisdom and insights that they brought to the council table. I wish you all the best in your future endeavours and thank you so much. I would also like to thank and acknowledge other councillors, namely councillor Adam, councillor O'Keefe, councillor Sutton and councillor Summer for their valuable contributions to council in this term. And I wish them all the best for future. And last but not least, on behalf of my fellow councillors, I would like to thank the C E O, Mr Peter Harriet, executive directors, Geraldine Christa, Phil Hall, Chris Tedzil and Kate Thompson, as well as each and every council staff member. We appreciate and thank all of you for your professionalism, diligence and efforts that you put in for the success of the organisation in delivering positive results for our community. And we also thank you for your valuable support that you have extended to councillors to perform their councillor roles in this term. Keep up the good work and well done. All the best to you. And with these words, I would like to
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just interject here before you close the meeting, please?
Yes, councillor Adam.
Thank you. Um, obviously you've just thanked the outgoing councillors and I think that was very well said. And to the incumbent councillors who are striving for another term. But I'd also take this opportunity to thank you for the last twelve months, especially as mayor and your last four years. Your contributions have been exceptionally, exceptional, professional, um, and all the great adjectives that I can't think of. So I thank you for your time and your efforts and I wish you all the best of luck on behalf of councillors as well.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Thanks.
And just very quick, just very quickly, Madam Mayor, could I just ask the retiring councillors to go under their seat, please? Because there's nothing under mine. I just want to make sure you didn't get anything, okay?
All right, uh, thank you everyone for all your kind words and uh, look, all the best. Uh, it's been wonderful in this term. And with that, I will now declare this meeting closed at fourteen past six. Thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.